Good afternoon and welcome to the twenty-first meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices, it will interfere with our commission reporter. If you're here to appear today, please come forward, introduce yourself and your client. And if you're here to testify on any matter on this agenda, please come forward, be sworn in and identify yourself. Thank you. Moving into the public hearing, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number one eight dash one four three zero one from Lava Tube. Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Richard McCall, last name spelled M C C A L L, I'm from Lava Tube, Waikiki.
Thank you. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This matter was continued from the November twenty-ninth meeting, public hearing kept open. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the November eighth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Lee prior to the continued public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Mr. McCall, I recall when we first called this matter, there was some comment by you or someone else, I'm not sure if it was you or someone else, that you were not inclined to offer room service initially, is that accurate?
Ah yeah, that's that is accurate.
So in connection with this application, are you asking for us to approve the ability?
Yes, yes, we do plan to do it.
Would you have any problem or concerns if we give you, if we approve the request without the room services? That's not what you are saying, you do not want to do at the moment, and then you come back to the commission later to make up further requests?
Well, would they still be able to pick up? Because what they've been doing is picking it up at the restaurant and taking it to the room themselves.
And that part, I personally don't have any concern with, but what I am concerned with is the service to the room. And since you're not going to do it, I'm just wondering, do you have any concerns if we approve the license application in part and have you come back to the commission to request room service if and when you are prepared to do that?
That's fine, no problem.
Thank you.
And Mr. McCall, since you mentioned that right now or currently the guests that order from the restaurant and want to eat in their room, they come and pick it up, does that include picking up alcohol?
Yes.
Okay, and how is that served? Does it serve to them in a closed container?
Closed containers, everything closed.
Everything in a closed container. And are your staff trained as to how to verify that the person is of legal age to consume alcohol?
Oh, the person who comes and picks it up, we do do complete ID check on them. And we also let them know, you know, what the law is concerning underage drinkers. And we check the room after, we verify what rooms they're going to as well.
Okay, so if there are any minors in the room, already one under twenty-one, you would know?
Um, no.
Okay. If they're coming, so say they're coming to pick up the their their food and beverage, whatever they order, and there's more than one alcoholic beverage in their order, what's your procedure for verifying that?
We actually limit it. So if if it's one person who come, if there's like one beer that's ordered and that person comes in, we won't, we don't do multiple orders. So we won't send up a six-pack or three drinks to a room when there's only one person there, yes, we can't verify the ID.
Thank you.
Any further questions or type of action, commissioners?
I just have a point of order, I guess clarifying with Commissioner Misha.
Thank you.
Would it be that we would approve this application and we would delete the rooms as 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 part of the condition that we delete service to the rooms?
You would you would limit your approval to
To go?
To to exclude the room service capability.
Okay.
Because if you delete the rooms, then then one would be able to remove the product from the licensed premises and take it to the rooms.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
It is good to that end.
Yep, okay.
Motion to approve transfer application number one eight dash one four three zero one with the restriction of no room service to any of their guest rooms.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number one, transfer application number one eight dash one four three zero one is approved with stipulation there will be no room service.
Thank you very much, thank you.
On agenda item number two, transfer application number one nine dash one four seven nine zero from Misty Blue LLC, Mr. Lee.
Ah, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. James Lee representing Misty Blue LLC, EBA Misty Blue. Uh, sitting to my right is a Miss Member of the LLC, K one Chambliss, C H A M D L E S S. Uh, we have no change to be here.
Thank you. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October eighteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Misha prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Uh, motion to approve transfer application number one nine dash one four seven nine zero.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number two, transfer application number one nine dash one four seven nine zero is approved.
Thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you so much. Joining me, Troy. Calling agenda item number three, application number one eight dash one three three two one from Paisley Meteories.
James Simpson, S I M P S O N.
And the gentleman next to you, please.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners, Ross Shinzato, authorized agent, and James has already introduced himself. Thank you very much.
Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received one written protest, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October eighteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Misha prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application, Mr. Stack?
Swear you in? Do you swear that the testimony you give today's here will be the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. I'm gonna run a three-minute timer.
Thank you. This is the application for Paisley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Alan Stack. I'm the landlord of the parcel adjacent to this applicant, immediately adjacent. Um, I have some concerns about the application. The tenant in the past via the people who managed the property came to us and tried to get the right to open a common door onto our property to help them with their occupancy requirement. They would be allowed to allow more people in the space if they could. Uh, we have not given that, they do not have that. I don't know how it's been represented. It's the reason I'm here. There's been some trouble on that boundary. They uh, they have an air conditioning unit that sits out over our property. They dump the rubbish from the construction of that onto our alleyway. I've talked to, it's um, United Chinese Society owns the building that the applicant is in. When I saw the rubbish on the AC unit, I called um, the person I know who sits on their board, and I think it's the president this year. And I haven't heard back from him. There's been no resolution to the AC unit, the rubbish. And again, I don't know how the doorway is being presented to you by the applicant with regards to increased occupancy. And those are my concerns.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Stack? If not, Mr. Would you like to respond to Mr. Stack's complaints?
I have received no written complaint about the air conditioner unit, and on my honor, I categorically deny dumping any garbage or rubbish in the alleyway.
You're fine.
Commissioners?
I do have a question about
Commissioner Lee.
In recourse to occupancy, there is occupancy that sit on your plans. In your proposal, there is a entertainment area in the basement, a dance floor, and it seems like you're distilling or manufacturing some product at the same time. Have you had um, a building permit for your your space? What was the space before? Typically, the building permit process would regulate um, occupancy, exiting, life safety of the of the premise.
Say again? No, no, we've made no alterations.
Commissioner, the alterations were made by this applicant.
Um, do you know what the space was before this?
Judy's Cafe.
Judy's Cafe.
What occupancy are you proposing for this space?
No more than fifty people, and it would only be in the top floors initially. Anything in the basement would not be occur for at least a year or two.
But this request is for licensing of the basement area, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner, can I explain about the?
Yes, of course, Mr. Shinzato.
Because uh, Liquor Commission rules prohibit uh, opening to an unlicensed space. We had to have the basement also licensed, which uh, is under their lease. If it weren't licensed, there uh, could be a possible violation.
Um, I'm just asking these questions because the protester had an issue about being asked about increasing occupancy. So you folks are well aware that the the space is small, so folks are gonna be having not gonna be having issues with overcrowding, people hanging out on the sidewalk, that kind of thing?
The primary business is uh, production, production of the meat. There is that space downstairs that uh, to be flexible, they may use it as a place where music is played and uh, dancing. But the primary purpose is to manufacture and sell them.
Okay, thank you.
So just a clarification, manufacturing um, is kind of a process?
Sorry, say again?
Can you explain that manufacturing process? Is it more of a manufacturing, like a brewery type of?
Yeah, yeah, very similar.
Okay.
Use the same yeast, ferment, and it ferments uh, from honey instead of uh, instead of grapes like wine.
Okay, and you do propose to serve food as well, I see?
Yes, we propose to uh, serve food for tasting purposes.
Okay, and is that prepared on a onsite?
Yes, and we are licensed, our kitchen is licensed.
And that is where, on the plant?
The three compartments sink right next to uh, the three X, sorry, the three X is right there, I think it's like the sink.
Okay, the cooking area is back there somewhere?
Yes.
I have one question. So how has the operation been going thus far?
We haven't been able to operate because we don't have a license.
Pardon?
We haven't been able to do anything because we don't have a license yet.
You have not been able to do anything at all?
Oh, we've been able to serve a little bit of food, but because we have a food license, that's it.
Okay, and as far as the manufacturing of your product, you have not?
No, we haven't manufactured anything.
You haven't manufactured anything as of yet?
No.
That is for the record, right? Okay, thank you. Commissioner?
I wanna follow up on that question by the chair. On the investigative report at page five, there is an indication that notice of violation for illegal manufacturing, sale of liquor occurred. We're not here to adjudicate that. That's from another day, I'm not here to prejudge that. But my concern is that just by virtue of being issued a notice of violation, I wanna make sure you understand that if this commission is to issue approval license, you are required to follow all the laws and the rules. And to me, this is at least an issue that there might have been not compliance.
Yes.
Again, I'm not prejudging it, I just wanna admonish you and your team to make sure that there's full compliance with all of our laws and rules, okay?
Understood, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions or type of action, commissioners?
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, you're now in executive session. Thank you, we're now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions of the applicant?
Yes, Chair. I have some questions about your lease. So on our report, um, we have that a Mr. Brian Paisley is the lessee of the space, but that he is no longer an officer-director or stockholder of Paisley Meteories, which is the applicant. So do you folks have some sort of agreement with Mr. Paisley to use the space?
Um, it was my impression that the lease was under the company's name. Um, he was the company official at the time that signed the paperwork. Um, however, is it is under the company's name, we're just, we plan on continuing to operate uh, with the company as the lessee.
Um, I would, I would make sure that that is the case because our report says that it is a Mr. Brian Paisley, not Paisley Meteories that is the lessee of record.
We will confirm uh, the name on there.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Oh, I don't have the lease in front of me, but according to the report, it says uh, this is to Paisley Meteories Incorporated and Brian Paisley.
Okay.
We leave the Meteories, Paisley Meteories Incorporated is a lessee also.
Okay, um, if he's no longer associated with your company, then um, you know, it may be cleaner to have the lease be just to the company.
Absolutely.
Um, motion to continue agenda item three uh, for two weeks.
If I could just intercede, we uh, so last scheduled meeting of this year is December twentieth. We are skipping uh, December twenty-seventh, our typical, our usual holiday break. So the next uh, scheduled meeting would be January third of twenty nineteen.
Is that enough time, Mr. Shinzato?
January third. I revise my motion, uh, motion to continue agenda item three to January third, two thousand nineteen.
Public hearing kept open?
Yes, public hearing kept kept open.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number three is continued to January third, two thousand nineteen with the public hearing kept open.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Mr. Stack. Uh, calling agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one four eight one three from Hawaii Seafood Arms. Mr. Luke, I see you standing.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Reverend Commission. To my right is the owner, Mr. John J U N K K C A I Leon, is the president. He's present with counsel Wayne Luke. Uh, we have little changes to the liquor inspector report. He has been operating under temporary license without any problems.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Ms. Rai.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October eighteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Misha prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one four eight one three.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one four eight one three is approved.
Thank you.
All in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Calling agenda item number five. Application number one nine dash one four eight six five from Y H B Waikiki LLC. Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keikiuchi for the applicant. To my right is Daiya Momodo, one of the managers of the Y H B family.
Thank you. Chair, due to a conflict of interest, I will recuse myself from this matter.
Thank you. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the some uh, submission of this application.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
What hotel is this?
This is a Polynesian Plaza Hotel, it's a small hotel off the beach walk.
Okay.
Okay, motion to approve application number one nine dash one four eight six five.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one four eight six five is approved.
Thank you.
Do we have the commissioner back, please? Thank you. Calling agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one four eight six nine from Craft Beer Company LLC, Mr. Nakoba.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Yes, afternoon. Devin Nakoba representing Off the Wall Craft Beer and Wine. Uh, to my right is Thomas Poster Brewer, K L O O S T E R B O E R. Uh, right behind us is Jorge Munoz, J O R G E M U N O Z.
That is the next plate, Mr. Nakoba.
Trying to make it interesting for you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rai.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protest, zero letters in support, applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October twenty-fifth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Misha prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Yes, so Mr. Nakoba, I believe that the your preliminary hearing, we were a little nervous about the location and the self-service of beer.
Yes.
Um, because this is like an open area walkway, right, at the South Shore Market?
Yes.
Um, so can you please clarify for the commission the details of your service and um, how you're gonna prevent over-service, how you're gonna prevent the service of alcohol to minors?
Um, uh, just a couple weeks back, um, we prepared actually uh, the handout that we provided to the commissioners. Uh, kind of detailing not just the concept, but kind of some of the things that we're gonna be uh, putting into place. Uh, one of the things is that there will be only one door to get access into the establishment. That door is where you will show your ID, you'll get wristband. Uh, only people with wristbands will be able to protect from the alcohol. Um, we also are training all of our staff, uh, and we'll have people there specifically for security, keeping track of who is getting beer, who's getting wine. Um, I believe Thomas also was speaking to me about the serving of the um, the beer and the wine is actually different. Um, if you don't mind talking about that a second?
One of our concerns was it's not the same to drink sixteen ounces of beer as to drink sixteen ounces of wine. So we actually talked to the manufacturer of the system, and we learned that we can actually limit the serving for wine to five or eight ounces, which is standard for a restaurant. So that was something that we were concerned about, and we took care of.
So your, what's going to be the um, the service volume then for each drink? So for beer, sixteen ounces per person per visit, or what what's your?
The card, that they'll they'll be able to purchase a card, and that one card will be good only for that, if I understand it, for that date?
For that day, sure, yeah. Um, and yet, as uh, Devin was saying, we will be checking IDs, there's only one entrance, uh, we'll have an ID scanner, uh, we'll be checking IDs. Uh, people that are of age and wanna consume, they'll get wristbanded. And as Devin was saying, we'll have somebody trained near the tab, just as like a bartender to be able to cut people off if they feel uh, that they're too intoxicated or, you know, they're not.
So they'll be taking the role of the bartender
Yes, yes.
as a monetary for monitoring for over-service?
Yes, and so will all of the rest, everyone on in staff will be trained to do that as well, uh, food runners, servers, plusers.
And every employee along with uh, having to go to training here at the Liquor Commission will also have to sign uh, paper that actually we provide to you uh, that shows the fifty signs of visible intoxication, they'll have to know it, understand it, know what to look for, they'll also have to sign it, um, showing that they learned these things, they know what to look for. Um, because when they created the idea for this, it's not, if I if I may speak freely, um, it's meant to be a tasting room. It's not meant to be a place where you come and you get drunk and you tie one on, you know what I mean? It's not that. You enjoy some food, uh, enjoy some, tell some friends, you sample the different beers that are there, or or wine is the case maybe, and then you're on your merry way, you're not.
So how much is each person allowed to drink?
I believe the
Three servings?
Three servings, yeah, yeah.
So
So three servings of wine or three servings of beer?
Three five-ounce servings of wine or three is it sixteen ounces, eight ounces?
Sixteen ounces beers and eight ounces wine.
Okay, so that's the limit, so what, three of those?
Three of those, yeah.
Okay.
And say you have thirty-two ounces of beer and eight ounces of wine, the system will automatically cut you off.
I I don't know where we got this number from, but I kind of recall is that the the way that the cards are worked, that it would max out at thirty-six to forty ounces per person, right? I think that was at the last hearing.
Yes.
So now amending what you're seeing, because your wine glasses are sixteen ounces, and if we take it to um, to serving size, if it's gonna max out at forty, is the wine glass eight ounce or sixteen?
The white ounce, uh, sorry, the wine is eight, that's a serving for wine.
And then your glass is bigger, that's the serving.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so it's just, okay, so the glass size is bigger, it's not the serving amount, to make clear.
No, the they they wanted to make the wine glasses a little bigger just because you're needing it to breathe and all of that kinds of stuff.
Okay.
And so if I may add, we are requiring our employees to go through a blue card process, no matter if they're gonna be managers, food runners, or we wanna make sure that everybody knows exactly how to deal with someone that's intoxicated, or how someone can handle a situation, or any situation given.
Yes, everybody in the front of the house is gonna be required to have a blue card.
And once again, the wristbands uh, will be different colors for each day, so that there's no like a mistake.
And they're actually custom-made, so it's not like someone can go to Party City and come
Yeah, they're custom-made with their logo.
It's very smart nowadays.
What about the pink one?
Takes money to make money.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have a actually question about um, in the investigative report, um, it was brought up, um, the noise impact evaluation. Um, I see there's gonna be a stage inside, and there's also gonna be exterior, um, within that, this the mall space and outside. Is there any projected music that's gonna be on the street side, or how do you plan to handle it?
No, uh, we're outside. So yeah, we do have a stage, uh, most of the noise will be in the space, we do have two outdoor speakers that are being uh, really low volume. Uh, just, uh, the kind of music we're gonna be playing is really loungy, no big bands, uh.
Yeah, it's pretty much single guitar, maybe dual.
Our stage is very small, uh, you can, two people, two people are inside.
And you have given it to turn off those speakers?
Well, um, let me clarify, we've got two different sound systems, we've got a live um, system that's only contained inside. Those speakers are not playing outside. Uh, and then we've got like ten little speakers, um, that they do play outside, but that's, we call it background music. It's not like, I was actually complaining about them not being too loud, like if you're having lunch outside during at three o'clock in the afternoon, you can barely hear the music. And you've got a wall, that that's the way it's gonna stay.
And we can, we can turn them off?
Yeah, if you have to, they turn off, yeah. So whenever someone's playing live music inside, there's no music coming outside, at least not through the speakers.
The last question about, um, you know, planners, um, I see that there's a four-foot-high planters inside, outside on the street.
Outside on the street, is there any barrier between the public?
Yeah, so if you see on the, you guys have this kind of.
Yes, I did.
Uh, you see the windscreen?
Yes.
Uh, the the plants in front that show there, they're actually a lot taller. Those plants right now are about three feet. And we talked to the people that maintain the plant, they're getting trimmed right now. There's actually plants right across from that, another planter area with the same planter, it's about four feet, so we wanted to keep it uh, high, so they should be at about three and a half feet or so. It looks really low on the picture.
Yeah, we actually told our designer, please make it look taller and stuff. And there's actually, there's actually a note up there, cause yeah, it looked like grass.
Right, right. Just wanted to clarify what she provided us. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, when they figure that out, I need that from my house. When you've gotten a figures that out, how to make it into hedges really quickly, let me know, cause I might add that, right?
Portable hedges?
Okay, you said good, yeah? Okay, you good? Okay, motion to approve, application number one nine dash one four eight six nine, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one four eight six nine is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, thank you guys.
Thank you guys, have a good night.
Thank you. Excuse me, calling agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one four eight seven one for Maui Tacos eight seven.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Anthony Suessu for Maui Tacos H seven Inc., DBA Maui Tacos. With me today is Jose Vega. He is the operations manager for Maui Tacos. We have no changes to the report.
Thank you, Ms. Aray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October eighteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Mia Shero prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing non-commissioners?
Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one four eight seven one, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number seven, application number one nine dash one four eight seven one is approved.
Thank you.
Good luck, gentlemen. Calling agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one four nine eight nine from Tomorrow Enterprises, Mr. Z Bakalom.
Law Chair, Vice Chairs members of the Commission, Emmanuel Z Bakalom here on behalf of Tomorrow Enterprises Inc. To my right is Mike Mitas, the Director of Operations, and we can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Aray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicants met statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the October eighteenth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Mia Shero prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing non-commissioners?
Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one four nine eight nine, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one four nine eight nine is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving into the license application, special license application, agenda item number nine. Application number one nine dash one five four eight four dash one, dash two, and dash three from Wildlife Country Club.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners and Ms. Aray. Rick Howard appearing on behalf of Wildlife Country Club.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, this is for the annual Sony Open.
Is it already that coming here? It is, isn't it?
It is.
Twenty five days.
Twenty five days in coming.
That's good, yeah. Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five four eight four dash one to one nine dash one five eight four dash three, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote agenda item number nine, application number one nine dash one five four eight four dash one through eight four dash three are approved.
Thank you.
Moving on, calling it, yeah, sit down guys. We're gonna be at the Wildlife Country Club here for a while. This is a special license application. Applications number one nine dash one five five six six dash one through dash three, Wildlife Country Club. Please, can you introduce, can we go through the same drill every time, Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Rick Howard appearing on behalf of Wildlife Country Club.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action? This is for a special general license on the following date.
Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five five six six dash one to one nine dash one five five six six three, second.
We're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I I vote, I, agenda item number two, uh, ten, excuse me. Application number one nine dash one five five six six one through one nine dash one five five six six dash three are approved. Calling agenda item number eleven, applications number one nine dash one five five six seven dash one through one nine dash one five five six seven dash three from Wildlife Country Club.
Rick Howard appearing on behalf of Wildlife Country Club.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five five six seven dash one to one nine dash one five five six seven dash.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number eleven, applications number one nine dash one five five six seven dash one through one nine dash one five five six seven dash three are approved. Thank you, Mr. Howard, good luck. Next up is Mr. Snyder, agenda item number twelve. Application number one nine dash one five five nine one dash one to one nine dash one five five nine one dash three. From Events International, this is for special general license, date specified for the two thousand and nineteen Sony Golf Open.
Rick Snyder, representing Events International.
Before, Commissioners, I just have one question for the record. Mr. Snyder, in no way are you associated or in any way these license are not piggyback on the Wildlife Country Club licenses.
Correct.
Correct.
They're self-stan.
Very much, thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five five nine one dash one to application number one nine dash one five five nine one dash three, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, I, application number one nine dash one five five nine one dash one through one nine dash one five five nine one dash three are approved.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder.
Good luck. Let's move into the preliminary hearing, agenda item number thirteen, application number one nine dash one four seven one nine from Foodland Supermarket, Mr. Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Mrs. Chair, members of the Commission, Ms. Aray, Robert Uyoka on behalf of Foodland Supermarket Limited. Presenting to my right, Mr. Jason Lam, he's the Director of Operations. At this time, we have nothing to add, and that's it for us.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Mr. Uyoka, so this is for the space, the Foodland in Kailua, near the Whole Foods, correct? Foodland Kailua, correct. Within the store, just to your immediate right, as soon as you get into, similar concept as the Foodland Farms in Alamoana.
Motion to approve, application number one nine dash one four seven one nine, second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, I, agenda item number thirteen, application number one nine dash one four seven one nine is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number fourteen. Application number one nine dash one five two zero eight from Hit Two Toes Nails and Spa LLC.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi. By the absence of my right is Lilian Mori, M O R I. She's sole member of the LLC.
Thank you. Chair, due to a conflict of interest, I will recuse myself from this matter. Thank you, Commissioner Mia Shero. Thank you, Commissioners?
Has the Commission received the supplemental report?
Yes.
Yes. So that's what she's put in for compliance.
See a question?
Yes.
This service is offered as a complimentary or what is, what is the, what is the intent?
The intent is to offer it, the massage rooms are in a separate area, so the intent is to offer it into the larger area where the, the, where she offers the nail, the nail finishing business. So it's to complement her, her main business.
And looking at the floor planning, where would the liquor be stored or served on this floor?
The liquor would be stored in the, you look in the, the large, like where the pedicure station is.
What page are we on, Mr. Kyuchi?
It's gonna be. A bigger part.
What page are we on?
We're on the floor plan.
Exhibit B.
Exhibit B, thank you very much.
Yeah. There's, if you see where there's a pedicure station, there's the two manicure stations, there's a little corner before the wall, that's where she would store the liquor.
Is it a locked cabinet? What?
She's gonna put in a cabinet and if right now it's not a locked cabinet, but if Commission wants a locked cabinet, we can do that.
So I, I, you know, I'm kind of familiar with this concept and I appreciate what, what, what you're trying to do, but most of the time, you know, it's, it's offered as a complimentary service, not to be sold. You know, it's not liquor to be sold on premise. It's a service that's done and you're shopping or what have you and they offer you, would you like a glass of wine or anything to go with the experience? Your intent is to sell liquor on. Yes. So while they're doing their services, you, what, what are you planning on offering? What type of?
Beer and wine.
Only beer.
And it'll only be in its containers, so it's gotta be like one eighty sevens or three seventy five splits of wine or cans of beer. It would have to be that, she doesn't have a three compartment sink, so she can't pour out the wine.
So they would basically have a, if they, if they were offered or they wanted a beer, then they would have a can of beer?
Yes.
While doing their nails. Okay, um, this is a fairly small establishment, correct? What is your opinion on what's your age demographic of your visitors that come in?
Most of my client would be about eighteen years old.
Eighteen?
Eighteen, twenty. It's pretty, some parents with their kids.
Yes.
But also, I would be sort of.
That's, that's kind of what I'm concerned about is, you have mommies and expecting mothers that do visit nail salons that, you know, I bring in my teenagers. We go for the whole pamper session and I, I'm trying to understand where the demand for the service is coming from. When, you know, like maybe you can explain that, cause I've, I've, I've looked at, you know, basically overall your business and the services that you provide that stand on its own, which your reputation for services that you do with your nails and your customers has a reputation on its own. But I just wanna come to mind and figure how the alcohol comes into play, that how that dialect happens, like, I just, here's, here's a concept that I can understand. My nail salon asked me the question, we wanna close down and do bridal parties because I'm gonna do a whole court, eight people plus the bride. Is it illegal for me to serve alcohol or to bring in a bottle champagne to, you know, have with, and I closed down my shop and I put it exclusively for them? Is, is that the type of concept you're going for or you're looking at, what are we doing?
No, I, I think that it's a new idea. I, I know that not many places, there's someone that have it here. And sometimes we just wanna relax, have a glass of wine, have a pedicure. It's not something that you go there to get drunk, just one or two, I mean, I wouldn't. And for the mother to bring their kid, maybe one or twice a month, you see, but most of the client are adult. So I don't see a problem complex. And I don't, I have children too, I won't serve alcohol to them. So to me, that concept. But I just wanna try something new, offer something for the clients to enjoy while they're doing the services.
When she first came to me, she explained it as offering an amenity
Right.
to, to the, to the clients. And this is, you're right, it's a small area, but it makes it easier to also police. And I think, you know, that's kind of what she had in mind, so we're not doing, we're not serving any alcohol, though the entire space has to be licensed. But we're not serving any alcohol on the other side, on the right side of the wall. And, and so we can police that, so there're gonna be no alcohol going on the right side of the wall.
Right side of the wall, meaning?
Like you see where the facial massage, break room, wax room, those.
Oh, okay, so that's the side that you do have those, the doors.
The doors, right, right. Because other than that, the entire space where you see the pedicure station and manicure station, that's all open. So it's a lot easier for us to monitor, and that's kind of the intent.
Mr. Kyuchi.
Yes.
I wanna, so I thank you for the supplementary report and that, the, the, the new doors potentially address the issue of being able to view interior rooms. However, at, on the investigative licensing report, looking at section, possible issues on page three, restrictions on nudity.
Right.
And also fondling. This is going to be doing massages and waxing.
Right, so what?
So, I, let me finish.
Yeah, no.
So how are you going to comply with these restrictions if basically what you're doing, what the services that you're offering are going to expose areas that are listed here in, in the, in the law? As well as massaging could be considered fondling under our rules. See, I understand that you're trying to do a new concept, but our rules were not created to accommodate this concept. So how do you propose addressing those issues?
Well, unlike the issue with the, with the view from the room, the view from the room is a statutory issue. The other rules are rule issues which the Commission can waive, and the way we propose to resolve that is that would only be occurring on the side of the premises that is, although licensed, where we're not serving alcohol.
So we would be essentially, if we approve this application, approve this license, we would be essentially waiving these.
We're gonna have to come before you for a separate waiver rule, just like we did, you know, with consolidated, to have a separate waiver rule for the, for the film.
You understand that's within our discretion, it's not required.
Yes, absolutely. Right, understand that.
I have one question, Mr. Kyuchi. I visualize what you're proposing. Wouldn't you call your license area a recovery, relaxation area? Where after I finish, while I go do my nails, when I do my feet, cause I'm a diabetic. After I, after I did my pedicure, right, I could go in and I could sit down, right? I would be finished with my, with my treatment. I could sit down and have a glass of wine without any other you know, recover, have a glass of wine. Is that the concept that you are proposing to us, and explaining to us, Mr. Kyuchi? So there would be nobody coming in and massaging me in that area?
Well, that's right.
There would be nobody fondling me in that area?
Well, but yeah.
I just wanna clarify, so in my mind.
That's, that's why this.
Because this, as our investigator says, Mr. Kyuchi, there are temptations and there are availabilities, well, for these things to happen, which we would not want to have our licensee be in the criminal justice system.
Right, understood, and that's why essentially the schematic is the service only occurs in that larger room. There is no alcohol that's gonna be allowed on the other side, even though that's because of the rule, we have to license the whole premises. But we're not gonna allow alcohol on the other side in the back rooms. It is essentially a situation where you would have the alcohol after your treatment or during your treatment, just to, as, as you say, relax. But one of the reasons she selected the large room only for alcohol services, because it's easier to monitor, easier to control. easier to control, and we don't have some of the other issues.
We do understand this is not the rich culture.
So
Yeah.
So the wine portion, how how are we serving the wine?
The wine's gonna have to be in, it's gonna have to be served in one eighty seven or three seventy five spoons. Because she doesn't have a three compartment sink. So essentially, the only thing she could do is pour it into like a disposable container, that's the only thing that department help would allow. So that's what she would be doing. So we can't even have wine glasses, you would have to have like, you know, uh like a cup, plastic cup. Disposable.
Okay, and then um just kind of uh I'll I'll reserve I'll reserve that that stuff, because I know I get my nails done and you got the acrylic powder flying all over the place, right, and you got this Dixie cup with my wine inside. And there's a lot of dust, right, flying around there. Yeah, sure, I mean I'm
We don't do acrylic.
Okay, so you don't
We don't have any powder. I would say we're strictly no acrylic.
No acrylic at all?
No acrylic, no. We only do natural nail. Do waxing, facial, massage. That's it. No acrylic.
What about your pedicures?
We don't do any pedicure, there's no powder in pedicure.
But with your with your pedicures and stuff like that, you're not using product?
We're using product, but it's not flying around. It's not powder foam.
Okay.
So sorry.
No, I mean, I was just reading your Yelp, the the Yelp reviews that was happening there, so I think there's a little like conflict, because I've seen the pictures on the actual products or the end result. And I had assumed it was acrylic, because it was there was nail art and all that stuff being done to it, so what about um?
It's all the gel polish, it's a polish, there's liquid, so there's no powder.
Are you doing the the pixie dust? Are you doing a dusting as well too?
No, we don't have a dusting.
No fades, nothing on that?
We do fading, but with the liquid, not with the powder.
Okay, so you're you're advancing your procedures, okay.
It's a very um different place compared compared to the nail salon. There is no smell, there's no powder, there's no but it's very
Let me ask you this, so you have your POS system or your 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 registered, you'll be handling regular sales?
Yes.
What is what would be your procedure for handling liquor sales?
It would be just like any other, I would add up.
Have another skill to
Another skill to
Another skill, and you'll be able to maintain your records that way?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is maintain a big one, have records of everything, so.
Okay.
One last, one last question. On the doors, because they are mini blinds?
Yeah. We're gonna take them off and and I talked to Investir Sada about this, we're gonna have to make a modification
Okay.
before the public hearing, which would probably, I talked to her about probably involve frosting the doors, but we're gonna take the mini blinds off.
Okay.
That's why I told Investir Sada would
Okay, yes, whatever, I mean, if we do finally approve it, it has to be
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Uh motion to convenance to executive session.
Second, thank you.
Move to second, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I vote I, we are now in the executive session, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, uh we are now back on official uh minutes, commissioners, you have any further questions or type of action?
Uh Chair, before an act- uh before a action is made, um I would like to remind Mr. Kyuchi and the applicant that waiver requests are purely at the discretion of this commission.
Understood.
Uh motion is to deny, I'm I'm sorry, motion is to, I'm sorry, motion, excuse me. Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five two zero, second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number fourteen, application number one nine dash one five two zero eight is approved.
Thank you, uh just like the commissioner, I have two adjudication matters that Ms. Okata will uh ask to be continued.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Short night, Nanyang. Good, very good.
Let's move into um Can we have Commissioner Misha back please, thank you. Calling agenda item number fifteen, application number one nine dash one five four seven six of World of Law eight.
Yes, may I request to my right, Linda Wong, President. And she is represented by Wing Luke, and we have no changes to the papers required.
Thank you very
Thank you very much, commissioners?
Where is this located?
It's at the Kahalauu Fish Pond, um it's a forty-two acre old wine fish pond on state national registry.
Unfamiliar. And you folks conduct weddings there, correct?
Yes, we have a wedding chapel.
Uh motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five four seven six.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
I.
I vote I, agenda item number fifteen, application number one nine dash one five four seven six is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Aloha. Uh let's move into the license applications, uh agenda item number sixteen, application number one nine dash one five seven one five from Cavolo Tavern LLC, gentlemen?
Good evening, commissioners, White Sweetman for Cavolo Tavern LLC, to my right is Jason Paz, P A Z, the managing member of the LLC.
Thank you, you're requesting for an additional hundred twenty days?
Uh yes, Chair.
Okay, commissioners?
Motion to approve um application number one nine dash one five seven one five for an additional hundred twenty days.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
I.
I vote I, agenda item number sixteen, application number one nine dash one five seven one five is approved uh approved for an additional hundred twenty days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number seventeen, application number one nine dash one five 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 seven from Shit Sin, April eighth court, Mr. Luke.
To my right is Mr. Ken Wiley, he is the president, he is president counsel with
Thank you very much, commissioners?
Motion to approve temporary application number one nine dash one five 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 seven, second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number seventeen, application number one nine dash one five 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 seven is approved. You're in agenda item number eighteen, application number one nine dash one five six one six from Rock Island LLC, good afternoon, sir.
Thank you.
Michael Gelfo for Rock Island Cafe, G E L F O. If I could please ask that the temporary license would start on the twenty-eighth of January, if that's possible?
Twenty-two January?
The twenty-eighth rather.
Excuse me, twenty-eight?
Twenty-eighth, twenty-eight, two eight.
Two eight.
Like two thousand nineteen.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve temporary application number one nine dash one five six one six to be effective January twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
I.
I vote I, agenda item number eighteen, application number one nine dash one five six one six is approved, effective one twenty-eight nineteen.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number nineteen, application number one nine dash one five six three six from two eight eight five D H Management, Mr. Lee.
Good afternoon, Chair, commissioners, first of all, I apologize for my casual attire, wasn't able to run back to my office to get my coat. To my right is Fit from Guard, he is the manager of the LLC applicant. Uh we've read the investigator report, no changes, Terry Lee appearing on behalf of the app.
Very good, commissioner?
Also, I'm sorry, Commissioner Chairman, and also we request that the effective date of the temporary license, if it's granted, be December thirty-first.
Twelve thirty-one eighteen?
Yes.
Motion to approve application number one nine dash one five six three six to be effective twelve thirty-one eighteen.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
I.
I vote I, agenda item number nineteen, application number one nine dash one five six three six is approved, effective twelve thirty-one eighteen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Agenda item number twenty, application number one nine dash one five six six five from F S M B L L C.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Anthony Sutsugu for F S M B L L C, with me today is Matt Choy, one of the managers. Uh we do have two changes to the report, one of them is to the map, can I give you the new map?
Please.
So what happened was unfortunately, the park wasn't completed as they expected it would be, so we were gonna have to change it, and it didn't make sense to continue with the map that was before, uh with the smaller dimensions of the park, what we decided to do was just uh license the entire park, because that light maze takes up so much room of it. And then with that change, obviously because it's a bigger footprint, we increased the security, so now we're gonna have uh I believe it's fifteen security.
Very good, so
Fifteen security.
I just have one comment. The owner of the property has done an excellent job with that space. It's really attractive as we pass by through Alabam. I don't know who the, is that Howard Hughes?
It's Howard Hughes.
Mr. Kobiyashi's involved in that, I don't know, but it's very attractive. It makes that area look a lot more presentable than it did when we were going through the demo process. Very good. Mr. Sutsugu, do you still estimate about two hundred people in attendance?
Uh yes. Um they're anticipating probably about four thousand for the opening weekend, but out of that, probably only ten percent of them are gonna drink.
Thanks for adding security.
Will they be food provider?
Yes, but the food's gonna be across the street and the other green space across the Milwaukee Street, but they have HPD, that's gonna help.
Okay, so you'll be catering the food as well as
So this question where the bar where you folks are requesting is just gonna have the two bar locations, and this is just for the actual light show, right, that is gonna be presented?
Correct.
In reviewing the investigator's report, I I don't see where the snow is going to come. All the slow machine.
It's gonna be lights.
Oh, that's later on?
Yeah. Okay, motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five six six five, second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I vote I, agenda item number twenty, application number one nine dash one five six six five is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Let's move into um agenda item number twenty-one. Request number one nine dash one five five seven two for Robbie Uyoka Esquire on behalf of petitioner Maple Bear Inc. doing business as Instacart. Good afternoon, ladies, and welcome to the Hawaiian Islands.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, my little commission, this is Yara Robert Uyoka on behalf of Instacart, present to my right is Rebecca Punaq, her first name, she is the general counsel with Instacart are responsible for alcohol delivery, her first name is spelled R E B E K A H, last name P U N A K. Uh present behind me is Miss Carrie Bonnington, she is legal counsel for Instacart, she has information regarding Instacart operations in other states.
Okay, do you have any other comments or or changes via?
Just after I would say, I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity to present additional information. I know you guys had concerns last time on November fifteen, so thank you so much, and we do have them flying over from San Francisco, so it's wonderful. I did review the hearing transcript to look at some of the issues that you had, and I wanted to address those, so bear in that letter when you submitted, uh regarding hers.
We have, we we do have all copies of them.
Thank you.
Um you have to uh understand, uh ladies, uh this is a new venue for the Hawaiian Islands. And I we realize it's very popular in the mainland, um but this commission has an obligation to protect the residents of the city and county of Honolulu, and we wanna have total confidence in any applicant before we issue a license.
Absolutely.
And with that being said, I know we have a lot of specific questions, um I share, Donabon?
I I have comments actually, and you know, Mr. Uyoka, you know me, I'm very hands-on. And um I was sharing with some of my commissioners here that I signed up for the service. So I got ninety-nine dollars for annual, annual um delivery. Um I checked the products online, which I thought was really, it's not just alcohol, so it is a grocery delivery service.
Absolutely, absolutely.
In which I wasn't aware of, I thought it was just gonna be beverage, but I understand the concept now.
Okay.
Um a lot of, I can see the convenience um behind and what what you guys are trying to do. Um I've kind of already adopted it into my household on how it's gonna work and created our profile on on what to expect. A lot of the things that I have purchased is the things that I would go to the store for anyways. The only thing is, of course, because you have to enter in your zip code, it gave you um a selection of the stores that you could you could select from. The only portion that I had wanted to see that I couldn't carry all the way through is what the disclaimer would be for the liquor sales side of it. Meaning that I wanted to see something and you can't test it or sample, but a screenshot of you know, if I selected the bottled wine from Costco that I'm assuming a pop-up window or something, some type of disclaimer saying, you know, what that you won't be able to proceed in the cell unless blah blah blah. I wanted to see that portion of it and test that portion of it to make sure that it wasn't foolproof as far as um I don't have any minors in my household anymore, so I'm not worried about them ordering stuff, but just in case the kids' house party came up, right, we talked about this, parents out of town. And you know, my kid goes and orders a whole bunch of beer and wine or whatever, and they come and deliver it to the house, that's where I'm trying to test on that. So more or less, just a screenshot on how that part works, how the checkout part works. And just what the dis- like, and it's probably already up, it should be up for the rest of the states, I'm assuming. So I would just request that as supplementary information, because if you know, having that would be helpful, just so that I feel good about going forward with the sale or transacting right after, or how the delivery part is done.
Happy to provide that to you.
Yes, if you wanna elaborate on that, because I'm not sure what the procedure is after you check out or what happens after that.
Sure, I would be happy to talk to that, so you wouldn't see it currently uh in a lot of places, there are no stores currently offering alcohol for delivery. But in states where we are currently delivering on behalf of our partners, uh after you fill up your cart when you're going through checkout, uh if you have alcohol products, you'll be prompted with a screen that will ask you to enter your birth date. And then in addition to that, it asks you to agree to a short series of terms. Those terms say both that um we're gonna validate that that birth date is an inappropriate age, but it also states that um first, that Instacart is not the retailer, that you understand that you're purchasing these products directly from the store, that you understand that someone over the age of twenty-one has to be present uh during at the time of delivery, that that person has to have appropriate identification, and that they will not be visibly intoxicated. Um and that you understand that if those things are not the case, that the product has to then go back to the licensee, to the retailer. So you have to agree to that every single time that you check out um at the checkout point.
Um on a wider scale, which I was like thinking outside of the box for myself, but do you guys, does it allow delivery to businesses?
So it varies by state, and states that don't permit delivery to businesses, we obviously do not do that. Um but in states where it's permissible, we do deliver to, for example, a hotel. Um and so that's something that uh we do handle on the back end, one thing that we never do is uh and it's very clear in the alcohol module that we um we don't allow delivery to any kind of retail space, so if it looks like there's any possibility that the product, this seems like a situation where maybe it would be resold, we're very clear that that is not um allowed.
Right. So the shopper would is trained to know to distinguish the difference between a residential and a business, or you know, that they're gonna resell or do anything like that, right?
Exactly, so what's called out in in the training that you'll see is that you're not um if it's, for example, you're delivering uh the groceries to someone at their place of work, and that's the most convenient place for them to receive it, they're gonna be bringing it back home, if the states where that's allowed, uh that's fine, the distinction that's not allowed is if it looks like it's uh in a place where it's gonna be resold, that's not allowed, and we're very clear about that.
Um I have questions about so delivering to hotels, motels, condominiums, short-term lodging, homestays, um do you folks get in a uh permission from these from these locations? do you folks get in a uh permission from these uh from these locations to offer your service to these spaces? Because uh we do have a lot of licensees that, you know, they there are hotels that serve alcohol as well. And that could become an issue if there's a if there's a violation, you know, so say someone is staying at a hotel that is already licensed to serve alcohol, but they get it from you instead and they give it to their fourteen-year-old cousin at the pool. And now our investigators are thinking that that was served to them by the hotel licensee, but it wasn't. So how do you folks get, do you get permission or no, what what's that about?
So there is the ability um to restrict a specific address for alcohol, uh and we need that uh to comply with certain state laws where if a family member, for example, says we don't want alcohol delivered to this address, we do have the ability to do that. It's a pretty manual process. Um but we've been delivering um you know, for I think about four years now and it's very rare that we'll get a request, for example, from a hotel, please do not deliver here. So it it is possible, but I'll say it's not um used very often for that specific case. Now um we would not deliver to like a pool, side chair or anything like that.
Well, but if you're delivering to a hotel, now they have that product and they can go freely go throughout the hotel with that product. So um is is there, is so if if a hotel owner or manager did not want this service allowed on their property, what would they have to do?
They could contact, if they contacted us with the request, it's sure not that address, that's something that we could accommodate.
Also, we have the the ability to refuse delivery and we talked about it's in in the training, that it's not just based on if they're underage or if it's after a certain time. The deliverers were encouraged and to use their discretion and judgment, that if they see kids around that, they can refuse it and it won't be punished by Instacart. So we leave them discretion and encourage them to use their judgment and not to give um not to complete the delivery if they think it might go to any any child or the children that could consume it.
And one of our concerns were, you know, the the delivery, who's gonna be delivering? Um thank you for your explanation that you're not connected to Uber Eats, but there are um other entities, right? Um so as a company, I'm just kind of curious how you operate. Do you contract out delivery services? Or do you have employees of Instacart that are your delivery and how how that works and how it's done in other states?
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak to that. So um the delivery, uh the people who contract with Instacart to provide delivery services, uh it is usually on an an individual basis. So it would not be uh certainly for alcohol products to like another entity. Um we would have a direct relationship with the individual. Before the individual is able to do any kind of delivery, uh alcohol or not, they can undergo a background po- uh process that uh includes both the DMV verification as well as criminal background check. So we uh wanna make sure, and this is true for alcohol, but it's also true for all products, that um the people who are offering delivery services uh don't pose any kind of threat to public health and safety. Uh and uh in addition to that, delivering alcohol on the platform is not a mandatory. Uh if you wanna deliver entirely, you have to A be over the age of twenty-one, but you also have to opt into alcohol delivery. It has to be something that you want to do. And uh when you indicate that, then you have to go through a process of verifying that you're familiar with all uh state laws regulating alcohol delivery. And so we're pretty comprehensive. You have to complete that process before you deliver um an order.
How does one um um if there are multiple, for example, Uber and um there there are um individuals that do are employed or or work for a bunch of different companies, um is that allowed in their your 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 company and how is that treated if if there is there a conflict, you know, if somebody or how do you track that?
Absolutely, yeah. No, uh these are individual contractors, so there's no restrictions on um who else they wanna contract with. Uh really, our only concern is that while they're providing services using our platform, um that they're making sure that they're following the appropriate laws and regulations, but what they do uh during other times is entirely.
So they're identified through like a sticker or something on their vehicle or how would they identify as a delivery?
So there are some states that we uh deliver alcohol in where they do have uh magnetic decal requirements and in those states will comply with that requirement, but uh in general the um the attractive part of this platform for individuals is that it offers very flexible work opportunities. So retirees, artists, people who are looking um to supplement their income or who need a lot of flexibility, uh use a platform and then they use their own personal vehicles. So uh there is not, uh uh aside from any legal requirement, they wouldn't have a decal on their car.
Or they, how would they identify themselves then?
Uh so to the end customer?
Yeah, like approaching my house, how would they like before my dog attacks someone, how would, what do you mean, like who who do I expect coming through my door, right?
Yeah.
Just when when I when I did it, I actually got the guy's photo before, so when I ordered it, when I ordered my water from Foodland, it showed me this photo, so I could, I would know that he's the right guy.
Yeah. Oh, exactly. I should know, okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So it's clear.
Okay.
It's kinda like Uber when you order it, you see the guy's photo.
Okay, that's that makes sense, okay.
Is there a limit of how much alcohol you can purchase and have delivered to you?
So some states do have uh volume limitations. In those states, we certainly comply with those volume limitations. We have the ability, so it's really state by state. Um if it's a legal requirement, then that's certainly something um that we enable.
But if we didn't restrict it, you folks don't have any, like your company doesn't have any standard limitation, like I'm not going to deliver fourteen cases of beer to one person?
Yeah, so uh.
Depends whose house.
No, I I thought this is a valid question. I wanna know how much alcohol can be delivered to anyone, please, unless we have to do something to restrict it.
Yeah. Yeah. No, absolutely. So I think um just to anchor this, uh is is absolutely right that our our main focus is grocery delivery. So what we wanna be able to do is deliver to your door the same type of thing that you would go be able to go into a grocery store and buy. So any limitations that would exist, for example, at the grocery store level would also apply in this context. It's really just an extension, an arm of the grocery store. Um so frankly, help them compete in this era of increasing e-commerce. People are increasingly rely increasingly relying on online services and we wanna arm local grocery stores to be able to compete in this new environment. Um so it's it's very akin to that. Alcohol is not um even in in the states where we deliver, it's it's not usually more than like five percent of the order. So I just wanna put it into that context. Um but if the state does not have a volume limitation, then um then the limitation really is is just a practical one. This is an individual who's going to be delivering it using a normal vehicle um going through um the normal in-store processes, um with the exception that there are a few additional layers that apply for alcohol. Um so so that that is typically how it's handled. It has not been an issue where we see people ordering more alcohol than um like a typical grocery store customer would.
Okay.
Thank you.
So understanding the concept and everything, it's the unknown, what's behind closed doors that that concerns this commission. Understanding that. And perhaps um maybe we can hear from uh a supervising investigator um with concerns they may have on the legalities of enforcement.
Good afternoon, Chairman of the Commission. Peter Nakagawa, the Chief Investigator of the Honolulu Liquor Commission, and Dan Sawto, our Licensing Supervisor.
Okay, so you've heard the um applicant um presentation.
Yes, we have.
And you're and you're familiar with that, so.
Yes.
Can you give you give the commissioners uh from your perspective?
Well, right now, upfront, the one of our main concerns now is pushing alcohol to persons under twenty-one. Uh at this point, at this stage, they are not a licensee. The licensee is providing them with the alcohol to deliver. And we do have that violation and we will at some point in time, who is now the responsible party? Can we hold Safeway, Long's, Foodland, Costco responsible for third-party delivery? We have no idea. We, it's the laws right now are not set up for that. Uh it's absent.
Can you comment on being able to um conduct an investigation on a licensee that does not have a physical location or premises?
It would be extremely difficult for us to even begin enforcement on something like this. It would require someone's residence, number one. Uh to place that into jeopardy. That would be their biggest hurdle. Whose house are we gonna use? Uh you brought up a good point where alcohol is brought onto a licensed premises from the outside, so we have those issues too. And I think Supervising Investigator Sawto can cover the licensing part clearer.
Yeah, so for the licensing aspect of what Instacart is trying to do, um there might be some conflict with HRS two eighty-one three, which is the sale of uh liquor from a licensed premises. And um and as far as the vetting requirements under two eighty-one forty-five, Instacart would not be vetted in any way, shape or form. So as far as the licensing requirements, it's gonna be absent for a third-party contractor. So we're we're kinda unclear as far as like like Chief Nakagawa said, enforcement, because it's fully absent.
Now, at this point in time, we realize that the laws in the state of Hawaii are not set up for this. The the laws that would regulate this type of activity are are absent. And it would be very difficult to either enforce or hold a party responsible uh for any violation.
Can you comment on um we we know they they need to have a duty-registered manager on duty at all times? Um and anyone serve, you know, serve, providing alcohol needs to have a certification from the liquor commission, either a blue card or a yellow card. Uh can you elaborate on the challenges that this business model presents for that?
They're not licensed by us. Therefore, they're not subject to our rules. And they're not subject to statute. Well, they would be subject to statute if they serve, but they're not licensed by us. We have no regulatory authority at this point. Again, any laws and rules at this stage are absent to to regulate this type of activity.
Would you have the ability to regulate the independent contractor drivers in any respect?
No.
There there might be also issues with the licensees entering a contract with a third party. Cause it it might lack the possession and control of the business aspect under two eighty-one forty-one.
So un- understanding now, I mean, retailers are allowed to deliver, correct? I mean, not and and we're, our discussion is about a third party. Trying to think other phrases.
They retail.
Yeah, they're they're retail.
Retailer is a licensee, therefore there are offices to oversight.
Right.
They retail.
So there a retailer could hire somebody, like a company to work for them essentially and deliver for them if they were hired by the com-
Are they a licensee?
Yeah, that's the question.
No, they are a vendor.
Correct. Yeah, so if if a vendor was hired by a retailer.
Would they have, would we have the authority at that point to hold the licensee responsible for violations of third party?
So that so that's what I'm trying to get at. If if this, because there are, me, so maybe hired by the company, right?
The well, basically the, like I said, the laws and rules to regulate this activity.
Right, it's kind of correct.
Are are absent, right. Uh we don't have anything for it right now. And I I guess that's why we're here, trying to ask for.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right, and.
Like some type of ruling.
Okay, Mister Uyoka, so when does the purchase actually take place and who is the buyer of the items, whether it be alcohol or other? Is it Instacart making the purchase or is it the individual making the purchase?
Yeah, if I could just uh maybe address that for a second, because a lot of this is spelled out in our in our contracts with the merchants in the states where we're allowed to do it.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So our um our our contracts are very clear on this point because many states do encounter the same question. Uh and so it's very clear that we are, for purposes of alcohol delivery, acting as an agent of the licensee. It is also explicit that the licensee is responsible for ensuring that that delivery is carried out in a lawful way. Because of that, it's a business imperative for us to make sure that our compliance program is very, very robust. Because if it was not, we'd be putting our partner's licenses at risk and they care very much about those licenses. So it's a top priority for us, but the agency is spelled out very explicitly in the contracts as well as the ultimate responsibility line on the licensee. You asked about the transfer of title, uh and I wanna make sure to address that. Our terms of service as well as our contracts are very clear that title passes directly for the licensee to the customer who receives the product. Instacart never comes into a title of the product. Um because of this, the funds flow we've set up very specifically so that the customer's funds for the alcohol products go directly from the customer to the licensee. We don't touch those funds. The licensee sets the price, they choose what products they feature on the platform, they receive the funds directly and title passes directly from the consumer to the licensee, or from the from the licensee to the consumer.
So the purchase actually takes line, takes effect, takes place online electronically? And once the purchase has been, has taken place, that's when you folks fulfill the order?
So the moment when title passes is uh in the licensed premises when the product is is taken off the shelf, there is a um point that happens in the app where it says the sale's been completed. At that point, we know that the product is there, right? Um however, the terms of service are clear that that title is gonna revert back to the licensee automatically if there's no one there to accept the delivery, they don't have proper identification, they're not over the age of twenty-one, they're visibly intoxicated. The terms are clear that at that point, title's gonna revert back automatically to the licensee, but the actual moment of transfer is in the store uh when it's when right before it leaves the store.
And do you folks restrict the age of these drivers and the delivery personnel?
Absolutely. Yes, they must be over the age of twenty-one in order to be able to deliver alcohol. Now, if they wanna deliver through the platform and deliver non-alcoholic products, it's fine for them to be eating and over, but if you wanna be able to do alcohol deliveries, you have to be over the age of twenty-one.
And that's verified through you, through Instacart?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Curious though, in other jurisdictions, are are you ever a licensee or what are other state jurisdictions or or?
So there are some states that require us to get um not, we are never a seller of alcohol. We don't, we don't wanna be a a seller, distributor, supplier. Um but there are some states that have specifically a delivery or a transporter's license and in those states, obviously, we go through the process before we deliver.
Right.
Um further to that question, I I have a more specific question. In the seventeen states that Instacart is allowed to provide this third-party service, is there any law or specific rule that allows a non-licency third party to deliver alcohol?
So the most common situation is where the law explicitly allows the licensee to use an employer or an agent. Um and so the agent of the licensee uh would be typically a contractor and that's exactly what the situation is.
Okay, so we have a statute that allows a retailer to deliver, so if our statute said retailer or its agent, that would be akin to the experience you have in other states?
Yeah, i- if if I may speak up on this matter, I I represent Instacart on a national basis, so I'm uh frequently working with other jurisdictions, so
Please. Mm-hmm.
if you're okay with that, I'd like to answer that question. It does vary from state to state. Um there are some states where in the definition of retailer or in the definition of licensee, it includes not only the licensee or the retailer, but employees and agents, which is akin to what you have here uh in the definition of licensee. In those states that have a specific statute or rule that addresses third-party provider deliveries, again, you will sometimes see the term agent of the retailer, agent of the licensee in there. So it does vary. But on the other hand, there are a handful of jurisdictions that merely say, use the word retailer or licensee, doesn't use any other language, and the jurisdictions have chosen to interpret their laws or rules to include an agent pretty much for the reasons that Rebecca has already articulated in that the agent is operating on behalf of the retailer so that the jurisdiction or agency has the ability to hold that licensee responsible. That's one of the key things and that's one of the things that the investigators were speaking of. We need somebody to hold accountable if the mistake is made. And that's why either through function of the law, the rule or the contractual relationship, Instacart ensures that the retailer ultimately remains responsible so that you all have somebody that you can hold accountable.
That is, that is our concern, but we also have a duty to keep the public safe.
Right.
So that's our other major concern is now we have alcohol being transported to lots of different places all over the island and our concern is, does that raise public safety issues? So that, yes, accountability is definitely a concern, but. So that, yes, accountability is definitely a concern, but public safety is a huge concern for us.
Absolutely, absolutely, and and as Rebecca stated, um, accountability is and responsibility is very important to Instacart as well. We actually brought a copy of the alcohol module that the uh delivery persons are required to go through. Not only does it provide some background and information on the particular jurisdiction's laws. Uh, it provides some information with respect to looking at your circumstances, and I think that's one of the really important things about your question there. Is that the delivery persons are not only trained just to look at an identification and see that it matches up. They're trained to really look at the surrounding circumstances, and that's one of the really interesting things about this type of a service. Where it actually makes in some situations uh it better for the delivery person to understand who is getting that alcohol. Because I can walk in, not me, a twenty-one-year-old can walk into a store, I'm not gonna raise too many red flags, but a twenty-one-year-old walks into a store. And that retailer has no ability to know what that twenty-one-year-old is doing with that alcohol. If they don't have their friends with them, they don't know if that twenty-one-year-old is going back to the house uh to a bunch of sixteen-year-olds. On the other hand, when a properly trained and qualified delivery person goes to a home, goes to a hotel room. And you have one twenty-one-year-old and a bunch of sixteen-year-olds at a dance party behind him. That delivery person actually has more of an insight into what is going to be done with that alcohol, and that's all part of that module. So uh it's a great question and something that again is very important to Instacart.
I wanna go back to the statutes in other states, um, you you mentioned that other states that allow this service to be provided. Having the definition that the retailer or agent is retailer, or defined as retailer, but um, the way we our chapter, HRS two eighty one dash one. Um, it's modified by by the phrase, as used in this chapter, the definition includes agents as as licensees. But the rule we're talking about, and what I think I understand in terms of what the declaratory ruling seeks, is whether the rule includes the ability of a non-licensed. Non-licensing third-party to do the delivery. So I think there's a disconnect in terms of the statute versus the rule, and I wonder if you can comment on that.
I I think you'd like to comment on that, the deliveries, the delivery rule does not specifically allow, or state mentioned third parties at all, but it does allow the licensees. And we're, our position is that it's an agent, um, and that the our delivery people are employees and agents of the licensee. So by saying retail licensees can do it, that's the same as allowing us to do it as a third-party delivery.
And and I'm gonna flip flop the question in terms of what states allow you to provide this service? Have you have experience with other states that decline the service because their statute or rules do not include somebody licensee or with the third-party agent?
Yeah, so there are a couple of states that have taken a strong position, saying we do not want to uh allow uh an expansion of delivery services. There are some that have uh chosen to interpret it that way. However, there are more states that we have worked with that have looked at that definition, said it's not particularly clear. And chosen, after reviewing the model, of course, uh to extend it to agents, um, again, even though it's not explicitly noted. So there is a a difference among states.
Okay, and any of those two states or the states that do allow the service, have you, as Instacart sought a legislative solution?
On, so that's actually a really good question as well. There are, I wanna say maybe about a half a dozen or so states where we have worked with the regulators who said, look, our statute does not seem to contemplate this. We think you have a great platform, we think what you're doing is the right thing, we don't have an objection to it, you just have to go get the law fixed. Or in certain states, get a regulation passed. So there are a small number of states where we are working on it from a legislative side, um, because the state has felt that their hands were tied and they couldn't uh read a a statute or a rule in that way.
And I'm gonna switch gears here, going back to the independent contractor drivers, who controls or supervises them?
Right, so because they're independent contractors, um, there's. Uh, it's different than an employee in that you don't have like a traditional manager. However, uh, there is a contract that lays out certain requirements, if you wanna contract with us, you have to abide by all laws. Uh, if you want to be able to use the platform to deliver alcohol, you have to be over twenty-one, you have to be familiar with alcohol laws, and you have to abide by them. Uh, that's a contractual requirement, so if we find out in some instance that a shopper failed to follow what we view as lawful requirements. That is of just cost to terminate the contract, which is what happens. Uh, and um, we have a fair amount of insight into whether or not this is being followed, because it is an online mobile application. We know, uh, for example, you have to obtain the customer's signature and have entered in their ID verification before you can even complete that order. So uh, if it looks like the uh proper course is not being followed, we have pretty immediate visibility into that. And then obviously, because that's a contractual requirement, that person is no longer able to continue to deliver alcohol through the platform.
Okay, I'm gonna switch gears again, um, you heard the comments from our supervisors in terms of the challenges to enforce or inability to enforce, do you have any comments on that?
If I could take that one, we could completely cooperate in the investigation, we understand Mr. Nakagawa's um, position is very important. So as far as enforcement, if there's ever a request for us as far as the identity of the delivery person, gladly put it out, we would not withhold that information, um, and we cooperate in investigation.
Let me try to finish this up right, so I'm gonna just focus, so you're doing business in seventeen states, correct?
Well, we're doing um, business in all fifty states, but we are delivering alcohol.
Alcohol in seventeen of those states, right?
Absolutely.
It it's actually sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, so that would be, so what is this, what is the um, situation with the other thirty-two states?
So if I may speak to that, yes.
Yeah, how many, how many states have flat-out said, no, we are not legislatively uh able to approve this?
Yes, so there are, let me check my notes so I can be precise here. Uh, we have received some sort of approval to operate in sixteen states. Uh, there are eight states where we are going through the approval process still. Uh, we are working with the states uh in various stages, but um, they have uh. No, I'm sorry, in those eight states, we have approval, but we haven't turned it on, so we actually have approval in the eight additional states.
Okay, alright, okay.
It just is not operating yet for business reasons. Uh, and delivery is either prohibited or limited in approximately fifteen states.
Fifteen?
And when I say limited, it's limited in such a way that delivery actually by a third-party provider may be permitted. But because of some of the requirements, uh, Instacart is not yet able to comply with some of those requirements. So those would be included in those fifteen.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any further questions?
I have one last question.
Last question, Vice Chairman.
What, what happens in the event of theft or missing alcohol?
Yeah, no, that's a a great question, um, so we do, because we have the ability to track uh every single order that goes out. Um, the appropriate course is if the product is undeliverable, uh, the product needs to go immediately back to the licensee. And so we have a number of um, steps that are ensure, that are in place to ensure that it does go back immediately to the licensee. Now, um, if the product is stolen, for example, by the shopper, I mean, the the chain of custody is from the licensee to the shopper. And then either to the customer or or back to the licensee. Um, so depending on, um, if if it gets stolen by, for example, the shopper, that would be an investigation. If we find out that it was theft, that shopper, we have a zero tolerance uh policy for alcohol issues. So that shopper would not no longer be allowed to um, to deliver really anything through the uh Instacart platform. On the other hand, if it gets broken, um, then that is something that the licensee bears the risk of profit or loss uh with any kind of alcohol product. So uh, that would be a loss that the licensee would cover.
So if I use your service, I order, I pay for and order a six-pack of beer, and I get a four-pack of beer instead. What's, what do I do?
So uh, you would call uh the Instacart customer service to report that uh.
Will you folks are available twenty-four hours?
Uh, that a portion of your uh order was missing, we would then do an investigation as to what caused uh that missing product. Now, if there was some kind of, only four six-packs were available, for example, that would be one result, right? So it sort of depends on exactly what happened, but if it turns out that the shopper took those two, um, then that shopper would no longer, that would be a theft of the product, really. That shopper would no longer be allowed to deliver the alcohol product, if there's a financial loss associated with either the theft, the breakage, whatever happened. Um, that would be a loss borne by the licensee.
Also wanted to mention, we do have insurance for, the business is similar like a licensee, so we are, we are maybe covered as well.
Last question, so in the rule of all of the states that you operate in. Have you ever had a vendor who has been robbed or seriously injured that you have knowledge of?
A vendor being the the retail partner?
A vendor delivering.
The driver.
Oh, the driver.
That's been held, the driver being held up, being robbed, or being physically assaulted? If.
Yeah.
Do you have any knowledge of that?
So sitting here today, I I I do not have um, a knowledge of that happening. We do have a risk escalation, so if there's a problem with delivery, but the type of situation that you're talking about, where they've been robbed or seriously injured. I can't sit, think of one sitting here today.
I'm happy to hear that, yeah. Commissioners, um, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Motion to convene an executive session, second.
Move the second dollars in favor, I vote aye, thank you. Okay, we are, excuse me, we're now back on the um, record. Uh, at this time, agenda item number twenty-one, uh, the commission is going to take this matter under advisement. Calling agenda item number twenty-two, request number one nine dash one five five seven three, Robert, Robert, you have two. You have uh, so, let me call it in, uh, again, you can uh introduce yourself for the record, and if you wanna make a comment, we will allow that.
Robert Uyoka on behalf of Instacart, present to my right Rebecca, yeah, also President Kerry Bonny, Bonny, Bonnyton, sorry. Um, at this time, we urge the commission to, we incorporate our arguments in the previous manner.
Very good, okay. Agenda item number twenty-two, the uh, without any further comments, the commission will take this matter under advisement. And before you leave, we'd like to thank you ladies for coming all the way uh from California, and um, we wish you the best of luck, and thank you, Mr. Uyoka.
Thank you for your consideration, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number.
Chair, I request.
Yes, uh, Vice Chair Ghanabon.
You.
Is excused?
You, thank you.
Mr. Ghanabon, could you get the red Mercedes at the door? Which one? Red Mercedes, you didn't, you didn't come back from San Antonio with the first-place red Mercedes?
Thank you, we're definitely here.
Bad bike, yeah, no opinion, three degree weather.
Okay, thank you, okay, back on the record. Uh, commissioners, can I have, oh no, I'm sorry, let's move on to agenda item number twenty-three, with question number one nine dash one five seven one seven. From Wayne Luke, on behalf of the Lila, the Lila Bakery.
Yes, matter of record, it's like Wayne Luke is counsel for the applicant, this is the uh, whole pineapple room that that just closed down, yeah, just over here.
At Macy's in Alamoan.
Macy's, yeah. Peter Kim is opening on Lila Bakery, plus, you know, he's gonna have alcohol.
Okay, um, motion to approve request number one nine dash one five seven one seven.
Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote uh, agenda item number twenty-three, request number one nine dash one five seven one seven is approved. Commissioners, can I have a type of action on agenda item number twenty-four through thirty?
Um, before I take action on that, I believe Commissioner Mearsurel had a.
On the next.
Motion.
Good night. Mm-hmm.
Uh, uh, motion for the acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in order for agenda items twenty-four through thirty inclusive.
Thirty, thirty, good. Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
I vote uh, the acceptance of plea and adoption of decision in order, agenda items number twenty-four through thirty inclusive. Or approved, calling agenda item number thirty-one. Mister, uh, excuse me, uh. This is the adoption of finding of fact decision in order, Commissioner Mearsurel.
Thank you, Chair, before we move on adopting agenda item thirty-one, I'd like to make a motion to modify or amend page five. Of the proposed findings of fact conclusions of law decision in order. Paragraph number three, the second line down, to change the words found on to the words possessed by.
Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
I vote uh, agenda item thirty-one uh will be modified to include the verbiage in uh Commissioner Mearsurel's motion. Thank you, moving into the adjudication.
What, I'm sorry, um, motion for the adoption of finding of fact decision in order for agenda item thirty-one.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended, thank you.
Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote uh, the adoption of finding of fact decision in order, agenda item number thirty-one is approved, as amended. Uh, moving into the adjudications, uh, calling agenda item number thirty-two, IES Retail LLC.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel Pedro Gata. Um, as to number thirty-two, I have been in contact with the attorneys for IES Retail, who have submitted a no contest plea in writing. I'm adding it up right at this point.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to if uh, waive appearance and accept the no contest plea in writing.
Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
I vote uh, agenda item number thirty-two, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first offense recommended fine is three hundred fifty dollars.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Move the se- second dollars in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote uh, agenda item number thirty-two, the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number thirty-three, Chicken Factory.
Good evening, commissioners, um, to my right, right, so this is um, Shin Su-Jong. Her name spelled with uh S U J E O N G, and her last name is Shin, S I N. And her, she is the owner of Chicken Factory, and my name is Dong Min Han, B O N G M I N, my last name is Han, H A N. I'm her one, I'm her nephew, I'm here to translate for her.
Thank you.
On or about April seven, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii. Licensee-employed Vivian Nguyen in the section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed. Without said employee being properly registered with the liquor commission and violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point five. Subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead, you can accept the charges, deny, or plead no contest?
So can we explain what the situation is?
Yeah, you need.
You need to enter a plea first, so one of the three, so accept the charges, deny, or plead no contest.
So if we choose the denier, can we explain and then?
If you, if you, um, any of the options, you will be able to have, you can, you can make any comment. Um, if you deny the charges, that means we will move you to the end of the agenda or possibly to another day, so that we can have a contested case hearing.
Oh, we accept it.
You accept, okay, motion to approve the plea.
Second.
Move the second dollars in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote uh, agenda item number thirty-three, the accepted plea, uh, the accepted violation is approved.
This is a first offense recommended fine is three hundred fifty dollars. And sir, what, what'd you like to say?
Oh, so basically, um, this was her first business, and then we hired Vivian, and then she told, what she told us is that she had blue card. And then she just had, you know, no idea between the Maui's with blue card and Oha's, Oha's blue card, you know? So, um, she's. So, um, she just believed that she had a blue card, and after the Liquor Commission came, and she changed her address right away, and then after like maybe three days working, she actually quit the job. And does that, um, make any difference? Or agree?
Well, we, we, it's still a violation, it's still a violation, um, and, uh, it is the licensee's responsibility to ensure that all of her employees are duly registered with the commission and have the correct card. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-three, the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number thirty-four, Tiger Market Mai Lee.
Good afternoon, commissioners, I'm Minya Wu on behalf of Tiger Market Mai Lee. On my right is Sheila Sellers for Tiger Market Mai Lee.
On or about April three, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, retailer licensee failed to have a duly registered manner or manager or assistant manager assigned to the licensed premises in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point nine subsections A two of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead? No contest. Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-four, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Wu. Um, sorry, Ms. Ogata.
This is a first offense recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Ms. Wu.
Um, when the licensee was warned that there was a man in the parking area and raised an attention over the licensee, an employee of the store was there to ask questions of the man in the parking area. The employee asked if an empty can of beer was left by him, the man in the parking area denied that the empty can belonged to him. The employee observed that the empty beer can found was not sold at license's store the same day. The owner of the store was in the town area, and the store manager was off from work at the time. Uh, as we plead no contest, um, we don't understand that what's happening in the parking area is also part of store manager's duty to monitor.
So, the, there was a manager, or there was a duly registered, um, assistant manager, but they were dealing with a situation in the parking lot when the, when the investigators arrived?
Um, there was an employee walking in the store at the time. Um, owner, uh, at the time was, uh, in town area, this is Mai Lee's, um, kind of by front distance. And, um, the manager who has a, a card, manager's card, was not working that day. So, um.
So, so what is the reason for stating that someone was out in the parking lot talking with someone?
Well, it's, there, there was, uh, someone from the liquor commission mentioned at the time. Uh, mentioned that there was a empty, uh, can, beer can.
Okay.
And with some, um, younger, young looking men, uh, in the parking area.
Sorry, I said, um, I think that's charged two.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So, this is.
So, I see, so charge one is for, um, the failure to have, uh, registered.
We're on thirty-four.
I'm on thirty-four, and I have this listed, I have two charges for the next, for thirty-five.
We're on thirty-four.
Oh, wait, wait, oh, we're on thirty-four, sorry.
Yeah, right, we're on thirty-four.
Yeah, okay, so.
This is for not having a registered, duly registered, then, then you're on thirty.
Oh, sorry, okay.
Uh, assigned to the premises.
Okay. So, I'm side this one, I'm just trying to figure out what, what happened, so.
Thank you, uh, for clarifying that, uh, Mr. Ryan.
So, the liquor investigators arrived, they told the employee at the store that there was someone in the parking lot that looked like they were drinking something that's from the store.
Um, uh, he didn't, from what I know, but I, um, get an explanation from her. There was really no one was drinking at the time, or there was, uh, kind of paper backed empty beer can.
Okay, Ms. Wu, is this related to the charge though? Because the charge is failing to have a duly registered manager or assistant manager assigned to the licensed premises.
It happened at the same day and same time, and the, the four same region got two tickets at, at the day. I look, I, I asked them if a manager's card, they had a valid manager's card. And, um, they do have card that is expiring on May twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. But, um, the manager or assistant manager was not working in the premise at that day, and the liquor store, so.
Exactly, so why, why are we continuing on?
Um, no, I'm sorry, why not, why not, why not?
You, you, you plead.
Yeah, okay.
I plead, it's okay. Actually, Ms. Ogata.
No contest.
Yeah, right, okay.
Ms. Please, Ms. Ogata, can you clarify this for us, please?
Mm-hmm.
The violation in investigative report, I, um, I have, doesn't mention anything about this conversation that occurred in the parking lot, according to the violation in investigative report, our liquor control investigators, um, approached a cashier, asked to see identification, um, asked if she was an employee of the store. The employee said yes, but their manager was not available, they did request if, to see if a manager was available, manager was not there.
Didn't the, uh, representative just state that for the record, that he was not there for the?
I'm sorry, this is not, that's not the violation in question, it's not a manager in active charge of the licensed premises, it's manager or assistant manager assigned to the licensed premises.
Yes, so, when, my understanding from this report, excuse me, excuse me, is that when the liquor commission investigators at- attempted to look for the licensees, the person who was represented to be the manager, no person came up in the liquor commission, the liquor commission, um, LCIS system.
So, no, no manager was assigned in our system?
No manager was assigned, at least by the name that was given by the cashier.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I.
Agenda item number thirty-four, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
Thank you, okay, so now let's move back into, uh, uh, agenda item number thirty-five, Ari Shu.
Um, members of the commission, this is one of the cases that Mister Kiuchi had, he and I discussed it, um, and he requested that we continue to the next available date, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-five, Ari Shu, to the next available date.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-five, is continued to the next available date. Calling agenda item number thirty-six.
Yes, um, Chair members of the commission, as with the previous matter, this is one of Mister Kiuchi's matters that he requested to move to the next available date, and I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-six, Cho Gajip to the next available date.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-six, uh, is continued to the next available date. Agenda item number thirty-seven, Cho Gajip.
Members of the commission, as with the previous matter, this is Mister Kiuchi's matter, he asked to continue to the next available date, I have no objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty-seven to the next available date.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-seven is continued to the next available date. Moving on to agenda item number thirty-eight, uh, Porky Sports Pub and Grill.
Hi, my name's Kathy, I'm from Porky's Sports Pub and Grill in Kailua.
Can you please state your name and spell it for the reporter?
Kathy, K A T H Y.
Last name?
Last name's Ogata, O G A T A.
Thank you. No relation.
No relation. Um, dude, does the commission prefer to go charge by charge?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, for charge one, on or about April eight, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee's employee Diana Farias, who conduct licensee is strictly accountable for under rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero one subsection A, and who was not employed as an exotic dancer with uncouth or in such attire, costume, or clothing as to exposed to view any portion of the pubic hair, anus, sept of the buttocks, genitals, or any portion of the breast below the top of the areola in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero two subsection A of the rules of the Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead as to charge one?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge one.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-eight, charge number one, the no contest plea is accepted.
And what would be your recommendation for charge one, Ms. Ogata?
This is a first offense recommendation is a five hundred dollar fine.
Thank you. Charge two, please.
On or about April eight, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee permitted a person, Diana Farias, on the licensed premises to perform acts or acts which simulate sexual intercourse, masturbation, sodomy, bestiality, oral copulation, flagellation, or any sexual acts which are prohibited by law in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero four subsection A of the rules of Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Now, how would you like to plead as to charge two?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge two.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-eight, charge number two, no contest plea is accepted.
Recommendation.
This is the first offense recommendation is a one thousand dollar fine.
Charge three, please.
Charge three, on or about April eight, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee encouraged under permitted Diana Farias on the licensed premises to touch, caress, or fondle the breasts, buttocks, anus, or genitalia of herself or any other person either directly or through clothing or any other material in violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight that point zero four two of the rules of Liquor Commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Your plea for charge three?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-eight, charge number three, the no contest plea is accepted.
Recommendation.
This is the first offense recommendation is a one thousand dollar fine. Bringing the grand total of fines in this matter up to two thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Kathy Ogata.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, these are serious violations, please explain how these violations occurred at your licensed premises.
I was in the kitchen, I was cooking, I was cooking, I didn't see.
And so, you've been sent here to take the brunt of the, sorry, you've been sent here to take the heat?
Ms. Kathy Ogata, uh, what is your position at this establishment?
I'm the manager.
Manager, you're not the owner?
I am the owner.
You're the owner and the manager.
Yes.
You understand that whether or not you are on the premises, in the kitchen, or in the parking lot, it's your responsibility to ensure all your employees comply with our laws and rules and regulations?
And who is Diana Farias?
She's my employee.
So, she is an employee of yours, you know that you are strictly responsible for her behavior on your licensed premises?
She's, uh, she took off.
What does that mean?
She's not here, she went to Philippines.
So, she is not employed at your premise, at your establishment anymore?
I don't know, she didn't tell me. She just, she didn't say nothing, and she never show up to work. So, maybe she's on vacation, I don't know.
But, if so, if she came back from Philippines, you would, she could come back to work?
Yes, oh, boy.
Even with these violations?
She's old already, I gotta forgive her what she did, she's old like me.
Well, I, I think it's gonna be a pretty expensive forgiveness.
She's old, what she's gonna go? She ain't got no place to go. She knows she made a mistake.
These are big mistakes.
Especially happening in Kailua.
I know, she realized that, she realized that.
God, on the Windward side?
She realized that she was wrong.
Okay.
She's sixty-one years old, she realized she was wrong, she said she didn't know why she did it.
Yeah. Um, the motion is to approve the recommended fines of five hundred dollars for charge one, one thousand dollars for charge two, and one thousand dollars for charge three, for a total of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-eight, the recommended fine for charge number one, two, three, uh, total is two thousand five hundred dollars. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirty-nine, Surrender Bar and Grill. Number thirty-nine.
Chair, members of the commission, I spoke with this licensee, or I suppose former licensee, she informed me that their business is no longer, um, they've shut down the business, that she is no longer on the island, um, I searched them, but she was, so she is available, I so she might move for default on this one.
Okay, and what would be your recommended fine?
My recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve a default judgment in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number thirty-nine, a default judgment in the amount of five hundred dollars is approved.
Uh, calling agenda item number forty, Kitchen, Cage, and Kaemoko.
Uh, Chair members of the commission, this licensee was served on December fifth, two thousand eighteen, they're aware of this hearing, on as they're not present, I'm gonna move for default, recommended fine would be five hundred dollars.
Could you let us know how service was effectuated?
Um, personal service was made at the licensee on Kaemoko Street, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, motion to approve a default judgment in the amount of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I.
I vote, uh, agenda item number forty, a default judgment in the amount of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number forty-one, the Pacific Club.
Good evening, commissioner.
Good evening, good evening, sorry.
I'm John Lohm, J O H M, D is the boy, E T H E, representing the Pacific Club. Gracie Grace, G R A C I E, G R A C E. Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to disclose that I am a member of the fine Pacific Club, but it will not affect my impartiality to preside over this matter.
Or noted.
On or about November thirty, two thousand seventeen, and or during the period between November first, two thousand seventeen, and January twenty-five, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to notify the commission in writing of the name, age, and place of residence of an officer or director to wit Charles Al, Robin Martin, Eric Schiff, Andrew Bun, Gordon Durant, Robin Stubber, and Charles Rhindollar within thirty days from the date of election of such officer or director in violation of section two eighty-one dash forty-one subsection I of the Hawaii Statute.
Sir, how would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Can, I'm sorry.
Then moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Uh, I vote, uh, agenda item number forty-one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Ogata.
This is the first offense recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
Can I just, ah, thank you, thank you.
No, sir, yes, of course.
We understand the violation, um, our past practice for over a dozen years that we can, uh, detail is that we have handled our, um, responsibilities to the commission on this in the following manner, we have our, uh, annual election generally in the first week of November, and we have submitted all the documentation, we have been transparent on all of the governors, but we've, we've done that January first, when they take office. So, we always did it within thirty days of that date, January first. So, we were notified that, uh, this was back on June thirtieth, that we were, this was in violation of the section two eight one nine one. This was the first time we had heard that, uh, or knew of that. Uh, we want a good, um, relationship, and we believe we do, with Liquor Commission. Uh, we have handled it as, uh, required this past November, so we were very surprised by, um, what we heard on June thirtieth, so, um, we just want you to know that and understand that.
Thank you for that representation, and how long has the Pacific Club, Pacific Club been in operation?
Hundred and sixty-eight years.
Terrific, and so the confusion was that you folks thought the rule was that when they take the oath of office, then thirty days from that day.
Then the thirty days started from that point.
The rule actually reads the date of election of such officer, but this was the first year that it was enforced in that manner, is that your representation? The rule actually reads the date of election of such officer, but this was the first year that it was enforced in that manner, is that your representation?
Yes, absolutely.
Ms. Ogata, any comment?
Um according to the history of violations that I have, those Pacific Club has had a license since nineteen eighty four and has never had any such violation.
May I also point out that in the documentation that we sent here, we always put the date of election, so we were transparent.
Okay, thank you, um hearing that, my motion is to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second.
Then moved in second, all of us in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number forty one, a letter of reprimand will be issued, thank you.
Ouch.
Thank you for your passion.
And hopefully there's no confusion next year.
No.
Thank you so much.
You know, you can go to our webpage, everything is on.
We we turned it in before the in thirty days.
Yeah, no, but moving forward, moving forward, yeah.
Moving forward, very good.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any progress, thank you very much, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh calling agenda item number forty two, Walmart, Mr. Banks.
Good evening, uh Mr. Chair members of the Commission, David Banks, uh here on behalf of Walmart.
On or about March twenty three, two thousand eighteen, and or during the period between February twenty one, two thousand eighteen, and April twenty eight, two thousand eighteen. In the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee of publicly traded company failed to notify the commission in writing. Of the name, age, and place of residence of an officer or director designated as a primary decision maker to it. Carl D. McMillan, Cynthia P. Mooreing, and Matthew W. Allen. Within thirty days of the date of election of such officer or director in violation of section two eighty one dash forty one subsection I of the Hawaii Revised Statutes.
Mr. Banks, how would you like to like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all of us in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number forty two, no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Ogata.
Recommendation is a five hundred dollar fine, this is the first offense.
Mr. Banks, any comment?
Yes, uh first, um I'd like to apologize for not being timely in filing this particular notification and and my explanation is going to apply equally to the next case. They were both submitted ultimately at the same period of time. Um my only explanation, um and perhaps mitigating factor is that Walmart and Sam's Club are both operating out of Mandeville, Arkansas. Big company and they have a corporate governance sec- section that deals with changes of officers, whether they retire, get promoted, or move on. And they have a regulatory compliance division that deals with the licensing and the notification. We had some uh miscommunications and delays there, uh when the documents got to my firm, um. They also submitted documentation in terms of fingerprints and background checks related to these individuals or a couple of mistakes. We had to get the paperwork sorted out so we could submit it all at the same time and. Honestly, I think this is in my experience, one of the first few times any of the commissions that strictly enforce the thirty day rule. It's been loosely applied in the past and and I appreciate that it's going to be followed more closely in the future. Uh so we held the documents rather than submitting incomplete package, um in one case, basically they were three weeks late, um and and that's the explanation.
Thank you. Um motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Then moved in second, all of us in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number forty two, uh the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved. Calling agenda item number forty three, Sam's Club, number four seven five five.
On or about April twenty, two thousand eighteen, and or during the period between March twenty one, two thousand eighteen, and April twenty eight, two thousand eighteen. In the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to notify the commission in writing of the name, age, and place of residence of an officer. Or director to wit Matthew William Allen, John Robert Ferner, and Cynthia P. Mooreing within thirty days from the date of election of such officer. Director in violation of section two eighty one dash forty one subsection I of the Hawaii Revised Statutes.
How would you like to plead?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all of us in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number forty three, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Ogata.
This is the first offense recommendation is a five hundred dollar fine.
Thank you. Mr. Banks, any additional comments?
I'm I'm sixty one and I'm old.
I don't, I don't know that, oh. Mr. Banks, old at six, at sixteen one?
I think we're all getting old at seven thirty.
Goodness, you're still on the side of the grass.
A long night.
Oh, we needed that, okay, I'm sorry.
This is back to our old schedule, man.
Yeah, come on, order, order.
Thank you.
Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars.
Second.
Then moved in second, all of us in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote I, agenda item number forty three, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Calling agenda item number forty four, do we have any administrative matters?